We're ready to go to seven o'clock here at Albertan City Hall on Thursday, October 10th, 2019. We will call the meeting to order.
Aye. Aye. Not bad.
That's true. All right. First order of business, we will do the Pledge of Allegiance. Line is up there.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Fire Department of the United States of America, to the Republic where wishes stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call.
Counselor Trump. Counselor Shanks. Counselor Sarin, here. Counselor Menson.
Present.
Let the record be set, we do have a forum. Now I'll be looking for approval of the agenda. Looked by Shanks, second by Trump. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. motion carries. We'll recognize the sheriff when he arrives. The mayor is not here, so we'll move on to council reports. We'll go to Counselor Trump. I just wanted to pause and let the sheriff read his report. Welcome. We're ready for him.
Eighteen seconds late.
I can dock my face.
Thanks.
Glued together.
What's that?
Glued together.
I don't think so. You want, you want a thirty? Oh, yeah.
All right. Any questions, comments, concerns? We appreciate your service.
Oh, this is the best one yet. I didn't have to say anything.
Thank you.
Back in the row, thank you. All right, continue, council reports. I did just want to thank Charlie, even though he's not here, for his amazing presentation at the open house for the Fire Department, and Chief Graham and all your Fire Department members for attending. It was a good turnout, very informational. We do have the slides that he used and the video from that night that we'll be getting up on the website as well, so keep an eye out for that. It is coming.
I was gonna say the same thing.
I'm glad you were there.
Thanks for covering it.
It was a great meeting. Have you received any feedback, additional feedback to the meeting?
We did get a large satisfaction after the city thought, you know, there was a resident that really felt compelled on the support and their enjoyment of the community to make it exciting. So we received that, and it was worth $25,000. They do want to keep that on as of this time. And then I did just have heard a lot of good things. The foundation asked Charlie to come and speak. So he said he would speak to the foundation, give them a brief version of his presentation. So, yeah, that's a good book.
Will the sheriff give that? All right, we are at the point of the agenda where we will have citizen comments. There are two types of comments, those for agenda-related items and then non-agenda-related items. So we will start with agenda-related items. Have any comments? Non-agenda. All right. There we go. Written reports, Fire Department. Welcome back, Chief Graham. I'll start with that. Hopefully, she feeling well, maybe her antiseptic.
I'd like to address the fire report. We have to have better communication system. I don't know, I can't fix what I don't know. I have addressed a lot of the issues that are listed here in my report, if you would like to read and compare. We just need to be able to talk. And that's all there is to it. The chief has asked for, to be on the agenda to contract services for repair. You have to, the council can choose to do what they do, but almost everything on this list is a communication issue, not a lack of ability to carry through, so I just wanted to point that out.
I appreciate that, and that's come up before, and I was gonna quote it for the agenda item, but, Chief, just so you're aware, one thing I would like to do is create something on the website so that you guys have a form to submit to help alleviate that, so that it's not a matter of...
I told them probably, setting up somebody to study.
No, that's fine, but I have the same network where, you know, if I get caught in passing or something like that, so if a request form is out there, it'd be super simple, but just something where you can log it, and then we've got a date it's logged, we have record of it, and it's something you can reference, be able to mark off as complete, and it gives us visibility as well, as far as what we're seeing. So that's gonna be kind of regardless of how we contract this, I would like to put, you know, that kind of request form out there. And then you can, I lost my word, you can have other folks on the department delegate. You can delegate that responsibility as well. So, yeah, it doesn't all fall between two people. That is one thing, hopefully that'll help. Well, and we can also see if the same trucks have the same issues over Albernan. You'll have a lot more insight into how everything's functioning, and maybe if we need to locate replacement or, you know, a bigger problem. Any other questions? Again, we will say if we do have an agenda item for the contract to repair. Any other questions on the fire report? Yeah, I will. Yeah, it'll be on the city website, we'll put it on a secure page. It's been online to do, so it's definitely escalated the need for that. Any other questions, Margie? How are we doing on gear and other equipment? Was there a hose check, I thought?
We never did, yeah. We were pretty close in the budget here. Little bunch of hose.
Did they come in and get tested, though? I thought Andrew mentioned that.
Fire packs.
Okay.
I didn't get this, you know, so I just read it.
Which?
Your report.
Mine? Oh, yeah. I was so busy with the nuisance abatement, I didn't get it until it was...
No, that's fine. I just see the pump, was that one of the newer pumps that failed?
No, that was our backup that sat for years and years, and then we put it into service when one of the other ones failed, and then it went back out, and then it went back in again when one of the originals failed, and now it has, has failed, so...
So the pump that you put in, that's a new pump?
That's a brand-new one, yeah.
Everything is sold. Very good.
Any comments on your report?
One, just one update. Fire Truck 135 is at Thompson Truck and Trailer, needs a new master cylinder for the brakes, and they will try and find one tomorrow. They determined this after parts were closed, so tomorrow they'll find out about getting a master cylinder for it. So that was an update late this afternoon.
Some other questions for Guy? Ready for city clerk?
Um, I had in there about the meeting that the mayor and I had with the Marion Library Director and Marion's city manager discussed the contract that we have for library services, and we had asked them for a flat rate on the contract for the next two years, and the library director was gonna take that to the other two library directors and the library board, and we just have an answer for us by next week, so at that point we can see what we're going to do moving forward. I did have a call yesterday about this item. Citizen was interested in where we were at with the library contracts. They are in support of the library contracts, however, in a little discussion between Guy and myself, the person called actually was in the county and on its jurisdiction. So I don't know if they're aware of how that works or not, but just...
Does that work? How do county residents pay for libraries?
The county subsidizes the, all the libraries within the county, they have a certain amount, and then they, based upon the number of residents that go there, they give each library a certain amount of funding, and it's a per capita rate, it's quite a bit lower than what we pay, what our per capita rate is, and that's part of the reason why we're asking for ours to be lower. We just think that what we're paying is too much for a city our size.
And the other thing we have determined that we can't be sure of is in tracking the numbers of Albertan residents using library services. They tell us that they're asking everyone when they come get a library card if they live in town, but we're fairly certain they don't. It's just Albertan address. And so we think some of the hundred and some people that actually use the library on a regular basis could live in the county. And so they're actually crediting us for a hundred and some people using it when it could be much less than that, which then makes the amount per active user even higher, so... But we have no way, they say they're asking, but does every person who issues a library card know to ask? Do you live in town, or are you in the county?
Not only that, I have a library card that's twenty years old from the address that I haven't been in for fifteen years. Swipe that, does it say, oh, Marion resident, well, I'm not. By yourself.
And I think we have further discussion, we'll have to get some more, solid answer.
It's because we would have to get their street address, and the library director is stating that that is confidential information. I've heard otherwise. If their library board has passed a resolutions stating that they're gonna keep that information private, then they have the right to. So, but I've heard otherwise that they should be giving that a cohesive. I don't know, I haven't dug into that yet, we're just kind of waiting with our current requests to see. They, they did, they provided a list of the current users that they have, that have an account, and then of that list, they provided how many have been active in the last eighteen months, and then it was broken down how many items, I think, they had checked out. No. No, not at all. They're all, it's just, that's who they have coded in their system as city residents, because they are subsidized by the county, so they're, they said that they are supposed to be tracking county versus city because they have to report back to the county how many county residents have an account. However, I believe you can go on their website and sign up for a library card, and I don't know, I don't believe it asks on there if you're county or city. So at that point, I don't know how they determine this, but that's, that's just a lot, so... I mean, we pay per capita, so we pay for every resident in Albertan and Salem to have an account, regardless of whether they do or not. So it's a little bit irrelevant of whether they live in the city or the county. However, if they're gonna give us a report and say, this many of your residents use services, it would make us feel more comfortable to know how accurate that actually is.
We're looking to return on the best.
Um, yeah, and I'm sure there's no, there's a lot, I mean, it would be a lot for them to track it more efficiently, but it's just the amount that we're paying to me seems more than what a city our size can afford, so we're just trying to...
I wonder if there's a way to call all our citizens, just honestly, the last two years, how often have you gone to any library? I can tell you my mate, twice fill the bathroom without that work.
Swag your card for that.
And it may come down to that, the city of Robbins has a similar situation with, they also contract with the metro network, metro library network, and they looked into contracting the contract, and they had like fifty citizens petition them to say, we want you to continue this contract. And they looked, they looked at how much it would cost to start their own library, and it's a lot more money. But this year, just because of the size of their city, they pay the same rate we do. They'll pay a hundred thousand dollars to the three libraries, and we'll pay about twenty thousand, so... I just don't know if everybody in Albertan who's a taxpaying or if they know how much we're paying for that service, and if they knew, if they would support us continuing to pay that. And they might, it would be, it might be something that we need to...
Or do they know that they have that ability to use it? That's another thing, too. I wouldn't feel so bad if there was a lot more people using it. So it could be an educational campaign of, you can go get a library card and utilize those services in full any time.
Well, and I even talked to Danielle about, do we try and get a Dropbox here in town? So that you can, I mean, you can return your books at high B.
Yeah.
So do we get a Dropbox here, so we make it more convenient?
And they did say that Marion's getting this mobile library unit, and that since we currently contracted with them, that they would come here with this whole library. I don't know what that means, that that would facilitate some of the requests and bring those items here, but, I mean, if they're willing to come here and talk to us and explain all the services and what they can offer, again, it's just, it's a lot of money to come.
Well, we appreciate you looking at all the options and getting very familiar with the requirements. Any other questions based on your report? That's, I'm looking for approval of the consent agenda. There are additional bills, correct?
There are. I, there were quite a few additional bills, and so I made a little sheet to help myself track it, to make it more easy, easy to see. So the bills added that haven't been entered into the system yet or are not included in plans list here is an invoice from IGD Environmental Services out of Central City. That was for the nuisance abatement we did this week at 239 North Main Avenue, and that was for $321.40. There's an invoice for SNS Enterprises, that is also relating to the nuisance abatement we did this week, that is for $1,350. There's an invoice for Handley Dirtwork, again, the nuisance abatement facilitating that process, that was for $892.50. We received an invoice today from Keystone for our drainage water analysis, $12.50. We got the bill today or yesterday for the Cascade system that was delivered last week. That is for $40,756, and I have a note on here that we, we have already received a grant funding from FEMA for that, that the Fire Department had applied for and received a grant. So in August, we got $40,048 to offset that expense. And then we received the invoice from the Lynn County Secondary Road Department for, they did the re-rock of Old Woster Road that we approved, and that was for $12,422.12. And I just, a side note on their invoice, they also spelled Woster wrong, so not everybody's knows how to spell it correctly on the first try. Just a side note.
And did that come in around then?
Yeah, yeah, they, it's right, what they, yeah.
And then the last one with the Sandry Fire Supply, did you mention that one?
No, I didn't. Thank you, Sandry Fire Supply, $1,050.50 for the SCBA unit. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you for including all that in the patent. I would seek a motion to approve the consent agenda with the bills added.
Counselor?
Second. Second by Menson. All those in favor? Opposed, nay. On to new business. Fire Department requests for contracted repair of fire trucks.
I just was asking about it, because you kind of told it, give us some stuff done. I know at least four things on here that's been out quite a while. I know we're busy in the city, I saw maybe we'd help get stuff going, but if we're gonna do, do a try or whatever, but we just, like, batteries, truck just five weeks, it's dead. We've done that for three weeks.
Batteries test, they load, they load test fine, cables are all good, connections are all good. There's a draw somewhere that I'm currently working on. I don't have it fixed, so I didn't tell you that I had it fixed, so...
I didn't, I worked on it, so...
Same, communication goes both directions.
Yes, it does.
Yes, it does. So I take fault in that.
Question for you. How often is it something that you necessarily can't handle?
Not very, I mean, if it's, if it's a large, I, I can't, I haven't even been faced with a large item, you know, yet, that, that was very labor-intensive, intensive. No, it's rare that I couldn't handle most of this. Did not want to touch the brakes on 135, that's why I said Thompson Truck and Trailer right now, getting repaired. An old enough system that I could have had that torn into many pieces and stuck there for a month trying to get it put together, so I know my limit, but I am more than willing, if, if I can't get to it in a reasonable amount of time, I definitely can take it out for repair. If I think it'll be done faster, I've been avoiding that, trying to save dollars on getting it repaired, and yes, I get pulled away to other things sometimes, so they don't get done as quick as possible, but I try and prioritize depending on, you know, one of the lights he's talking about is half not working. Part of the, it's an LED, and half the LEDs are out, still functioning. The lights on 134, no idea they were out.
I just found out about that, yes.
So, you know, things like that, communication improvement and, and being more willing to send it out, if that's okay with the council, I'm willing to do, no problem.
And just look at, if we were to contract first to send it out, because I, I know most garages, you potentially wait three to four weeks, depending on, you know, what they have coming in. So I just want to get a sense for, is it worth to have that contract, have someone who's gonna give us that response for something you're not comfortable with, or now you don't have any help anymore? So I just want to respect your workload as well, and then make sure, how often, and this is just why I'm not understanding, and maybe the rest of the council does, when you respond, how many trucks generally go out? I know that's gonna depend on what you're responding to.
With fire, they're all gonna go.
Okay.
Four. No, all just one, maybe.
If anything on any of those trucks was, had it stopped, I think I've definitely been going high gear on it, like, it is not safe to drive. For example, the brakes on 135, the brakes are functioning perfectly, it just has a minor leak, and of course, that could lead to a failure, but it still has been used since it's been leaking. And it actually quit for a little while. We cleaned it up underneath it, and a week later, there was no brake fluid underneath it. So I didn't know if a seal got back into position, just as an example of the way I approach those repairs, so...
I appreciate that.
Yeah. But if I don't, I don't have any help, that is correct right now, and so if I'm swamped, I'll take it out, I'll send it to...
Well, I...
Thompson was great about getting 135 in and working on it immediately, so that was, that was good to know, so...
And my guy charges half, but Thompson charged, he's worked there, I used to work there. Mechanics help us check out, so they'll drive your place and pick stuff. He's took the AC horse for free, and air leak, but they're probably fixed for free.
Would he require a contract, or would he do...
I'd just, whatever. I mean, there's no contract, just if I need him, he could do it. When he charges sixty-five bucks an hour, Thompson, when I worked there five years ago, it was over a hundred. Safety really that way, you can't fix a truck's house. Definitely dollar insurance policy.
So that...
No, he would work on whatever we want him to, I mean...
And I'm cool with that, we just should have him come in and get all his information and get a copy of his insurance and whatever, and I'm cool with that. If I say this is over my head, or I don't have time for this, and I can call him, I'm fine.
Just making sure that you guys are communicating, so the city's aware of...
I still think we should do that.
Yeah.
Thing. Yeah, work.
Because then the same way, when he completes something, you'll be able to see, I mean, it'll be a back and forth tracks.
I'm cool with that.
But any requests of a pump, or guy, or server through the system, so we'll know when there's something...
Well, if he can't do it, then he can let you know, when I can call him, or if he's busy, or, you know... Or guy can call him.
Yeah, have him stop in if he can, if he's up in the same room.
It's Bill.
It's on Bill, okay. Okay. I wondered when I read your request.
Cool.
Okay.
I think we have a plan for, like Chester said, let's keep an eye on it. I mean, if it does get too heavy, then...
Not a problem.
On the right side, sit and make sure it's gonna work.
Not a problem. That's why...
And I might need some information to get that form up and going, so I might reach out via email for that. All right. So I don't think we had any action on that. Item B is building inspections, discuss contract option with Lynn County.
That's you.
That's me. Back and out.
I'd like to start by saying I was not a fan of this option. I don't know why, really, I can't even pinpoint it, but after we met with Luke and Andy, who came to visit with us, I am now on board, very much so, especially after some failures in our building inspection, not true failures, but just frustrations in our current building inspection format. They were very impressive and, and very professional and very thorough in their, in their approach, so... I don't know what kind of information you would like to hear tonight. I mean, how much do you want to know?
I, I just want to segment that. I mean, I called, and they came here to meet with us. It was Luke and Andy, is that right? And they came here and met with us, and they came here for a couple of days, we called them, we set up an appointment, and they were very quick to respond and very professional. And I know that the city of Center Point works through the county building permits, and I talked to their clerk, and she loves having their services. As Andy had said, those businesses are work every week, so they can stay on top of what's going on. There's no cost to us to do this. And the benefit as well is that, well, I'll just let you do it.
Why? I gotta admit, I did not prepare a formal presentation.
That's okay. We're not a super formal group.
I'm not formal.
We're just hitting the highlights and getting them introduced to the idea anyway, so...
We, we have three inspectors. We, we track pretty much every single thing we do. Ninety-nine percent of the time, we get to the inspection that same day that was requested, so that's pretty impressive. We have people driving through here every single day, so, I mean...
And several other towns are doing the same thing for, Mount Vernon, Lisbon, Bertram.
Mount Vernon, Lisbon, Bertram, Center Point. I assume that you've got online, you can get your permit online? Yes, yes, we just... How user-friendly are they? Doesn't look that bad. It's, you have to call in, and then you set up an account with our clerical staff that'll walk any homeowner, contractor... So you don't have to be a computer nerd? No. They'll, our clerical staff will help you get your submittals in. I think that's important. There's a lot of email going back and forth saying, okay, now wait a minute, we didn't get this, and they'll send you... And they'll send you a handout or they'll send you whatever information to help you get it. Um, you can't, you couldn't apply over the phone. You'd have to come in and physically fill out the application. So you'd either have to do it online or come to Lynn County and do it, but. We actually wouldn't do that. Oh, yeah, you could do that, but just one thing we, we really kind of narrowed down for ourselves was we had to cut out the middleman with a lot of the cities because we had some of the customers going to Mount Vernon and filling out apps and then we found that there was like a, a huge delay between the submittals going to the cities and then getting to us and then we were taking on all the complaints. Oh, okay.
Just to better his mother doesn't have a computer, she would type in the information for her on the.
Yeah, anybody could do that. Either we're at your house, my house, yeah. Yeah. So you, you would accept, like you're talking about drawings for various projects, just scan those in, that's accepted in?
Yep. It's only not, if it's not accepted, it's a request for more information.
Okay.
And most of the time that, all those type of things come to me right now. So every single online permit is submitted to me. So I'm the only one who does the digital plan reviews at this point, which I just am expanding the budget right now because it kind of sped up. A lot of customers wanted that and we didn't really promote it. So it is a newer service to us, but it is working fabulously and I was going to wait. We have some budget amendments in the department to fund the rest of my inspectors having the same capability, but I don't think I'm going to wait. I think I'm just going to pull it out of my regular budget. Nope, it depends on the, the project, which typically a house would, doesn't require an architect.
Really?
No.
Yeah.
Menards can draw you up a house plan.
Oh, yeah.
If that's what you want to do, so, yeah.
If, if you want to, you can, and then we honor those, you know, the seals per state law, but it's not required.
Well, instead of blueprints though, that doesn't necessarily mean an architect prepared them.
Oh, yeah, but that's.
Yeah, yeah. Right, right.
In our package, we've got a permit fee, we've got electrical, mechanical and plumbing schedule. Can you explain how those work together a little bit?
Yep, um, the single family dwelling, the rates you're seeing on that schedule, we'll say it like that. Those are based off of valuation. If I, I'm not sure which form you have, I'm, I'm assuming it says. Yeah. These fees are based off of valuation that our clerical staff calculates. So there should be another form in there. That's a valuation. And you didn't give that?
No. I think she sent in electronic links to go back.
I think, yeah, I think she sent in a sample, but a brief explanation of that would be. Oh, wow.
I don't, I didn't understand some of this.
It's a. Okay, well, well, this is just, that's too complicated. So, okay, so this is how it works. So you come in as a customer, you want to apply for a permit. The fees you're looking at is for the building permit. When the customer comes in or online, it's figured in the software, there's a, a price per square foot of finished space. So first floor is forty-two dollars. To explain that, so on the first floor of a new house, you would pay forty-two dollars a finished square foot. Garages are something different, that's cheaper, and I don't know all the numbers off the top of my head. But the national average is a hundred and twenty-two dollars. So what our staff does is, as an example, one customer came in, I think the house was like seven hundred thousand dollar house. The valuation that we charged the fee on was a hundred and twenty-four. So.
Okay, so I come in, I want those thousand square foot, it's forty-two thousand dollars. Is that what you're saying? What do you use for, yeah, and that's, we come down to the chart and there it is.
We haven't raised our fees in like twenty years.
That, that, that makes sense, but when you get the electrical, mechanical, plumbing, how's that?
Those are, uh, for, I think, again, don't quote me on the numbers, but it's like forty or fifty bucks.
So if I, if you just want to do some electrical updates, you just need this or put in a change of mechanical, you just need mechanical?
Yep, if you're going to do like a service change on your house to have the new electrical panel put in, I think that's like forty bucks.
Okay.
But if you're going to build that new house, you're going to pay a billing permit and an electrical permit and a plumbing permit and a mechanical permit.
And that's what I'm trying to get clear on.
Yeah.
Average size home typically, I would say, would be under a thousand bucks. So that's, we're the cheapest by far amongst all the.
And you handle all the applications, course inspections, you take the money. That's no cost to the city, right? Nope, we don't get any billing permit money, it goes to this one.
Now, uh, we have found that, um, our water sewer hookup rates were supposed to be five hundred for water, five hundred for sewers. That hasn't been charged in quite some time. Or if it was charged, it wasn't allocated out correctly so that we can track it. It's been since two thousand eighteen, maybe since the last time somebody paid and it was coded to that.
Put into that coded part of something.
What they do for other cities and they can do for us is act as a.
Fiscal agent, I didn't come up with the term.
Fiscal agent. And they would, somebody were cut to come in and get a permit for a new home construction. They would charge that water sewer connection fee and then they would, uh, turn those funds over to us, all of that fee.
I think there's a thirty-five dollar fee for that part of it because it costs us money to do it. But, yeah, basically we, we would charge thirty-five dollars, take in the thousand dollars on your behalf. And then I think, most of the cities are quarterly, that we just refund the money back, so.
And see, we haven't been getting that water sewer hookup fee for quite some time now. So even though we'll be losing some billing permit fees, this would be a great way to get back in to making sure that we collect that water and sewer fee every single time a house is built, which.
I was going to say, the other thing is, I mean, literally on your example of like an electrical permit. Say we take in forty dollars for that electrical service. We, we may have our staff, we have clerical intake, we have inspector maybe coming out more than once or twice and we took in forty dollars. Now there's, the state has a seventy-two hour minimum waiting period for something like that. If you had a citizen with a storm damage, we'd be out that same day. So we don't make money, it's not a money-making proposition. It's a service the county believes in.
They're a cog in the, in the wheel of the county and we would get to take advantage of that and be part of that.
We haven't been, uh, we haven't been consistent also on how we calculate our billing permits because of questions I don't understand, everything about buildings, footings, so.
Products ordinances are different than ours and so their help is helpful, but yet confusing.
So, I mean, it would be good to have consistency in knowing that it's being handled the same way for everybody who's coming in to get a permit.
Yeah. The county takes care of all the code adoption. I meet with all, all the local building officials as well as I meet at the state level with all the building officials in the state of Iowa to discuss code updates. Basically, we handle it all and that, the other part of city of Albernett adopting the county code is that it maintains the standard. So all the contractors coming into Albernett are following the same rules that they're following. Marion, Cedar Rapids and that's what we meet locally and on is to try to standardize that to make it easier for everybody.
A couple of other items. I, I did contact, um, Data Tech, G-Works, because we just paid for that module last year. It was around two thousand dollars for the module and the training. And I had let them know earlier that I'm not super comfortable with it. I don't think it, I think it's really cumbersome. I asked if they'd be willing to give us any sort of refund, like a partial refund, and they said no. So I asked them to reconsider, um, giving us some sort of refund, but, um, we would potentially be out of that entire amount of money if we did go with the county because we would need that lot more.
To a water sewer for those.
Yeah, right.
That we're not getting the money more in.
And you're on the same building code as St. Robbins is now?
I have no idea, Robbins.
Robbins stands by itself.
Yeah.
But we just adopted the latest, we were talking when you were here, that I, I bet we're really.
We ought to be in Canada one.
Yeah, and they even will provide. Yeah, right, and they will actually provide language, draft language, if we need to make some changes to make this transition so that if, basically, we can fall in line with what they need and it's easy for us to adopt it, you know, so that we're together.
Do any of the communities you work with today have any nuances as far as inspection schedules? Like, or is everything standard for your department?
Uh, zoning sometimes can be, you know, cities will ask for a little more information when we take in the zoning application. That's about it because the zoning would stay with the city. We wouldn't get involved with that at all.
Yeah, didn't you say, once you take an application in, you then.
We send it to you guys for approval, yeah.
To check the zoning and then back to them to go ahead and, and issue the permit.
And our inspector would verify your setbacks and your rules at the time of the footing inspection. So.
So then again, we get another layer of, hey, there's a new billing permit coming. It's been, or a new electrical permit coming or whatever it is because they're checking with us on it on that forefront as well as the weekly report. So we wouldn't be out of the loop at all as far as, you know, we, you know, some of these contractors have gotten used to events doing our inspections and they bypass us altogether and go straight to Robbins. And Liz is so helpful, she lets them fill out the permit there and then we hear about it a day later and whatever and didn't have any clue, well, I think we'd be in better touch this way than the other way. And the, the response, if what he's telling us is true about the same day or the very next day for inspections, that is so much incredibly better than what we're getting now. And the actual accuracy and, and completeness of the inspection compared to what we're getting right now.
And just on that point, we have three licensed electricians. Our other inspector has, I don't know how many special inspection certifications, which means like reinforced concrete certifications and soil bearing capacity certifications. I don't even know, he's got so many, but.
I don't know, our permits aren't that straightforward.
So if you come and do a mechanical or an electrical inspection, is there a checklist and all this and check, we're done? Or you just kind of come in and look around or how's it work?
Is there a checklist?
I mean, is there something that you sign off on that I've been here that day and it's perhaps.
Absolutely, we, uh, depending on, well, ninety percent of the contractors are already in our system. So they can apply or request inspections online, they can, most of, they can view their account online to see which projects they have, what inspection's been done. When our inspectors come back and they sync their tablets, it'll automatically send an email to the contractors who have registered for that service, as well as all our trucks have printers so the guys can print out correction sheets if nobody's around. So, yeah, the, everybody, and that's the thing, it's, everybody's like, oh, they have to come to Lynn County for the permit. What we found, and we actually researched this for some of the cities, all the contractors primarily are coming from our area anyways, so they were already like, well, we're already used to coming to you guys, so. It just wasn't a transition, there was a lot less homeowners getting their own permits, was our result, I guess. The other thing I would recommend, if the city's worried, worried about retaining some money is administration fees, things like that.
If we might make an agreement, we could include a hundred dollar administrative fee or whatever that number might be.
As part of your fiscal agent side of the. And that has nothing to do with us, we, it's thirty-five dollars, you guys could charge twenty thousand a house, we don't care. We're not going to make money, we're not trying to. We want to, we want to do your inspections and provide a safe.
On that note, I was going to look and see, I mean, we have consistently been taking in more revenue from building permits than we have been spending. However, when we had talked about going to Marion, it was going to be a higher expense. I mean, Marion charges more than we're paying for it right now. Marion's not.
Side note today, I talked to Marion's, um, billing director, I think is his title. And it didn't sound like Marion would take on any new cities that just, or ever, it sounded like.
Sort of a nice control.
I took care of that for him. We should have done a lot of that.
So, um, there is that variance, you know, having that revenue versus the expense of paying for the inspection fee. However, I think it's a good service versus instead of have an inspection team that you feel is doing a good and safe job. As he had mentioned, if the school does, um, the.
Bond issue.
The bond issue, that's their.
Expansion.
What?
Expansion.
Yes, thank you, I struggled to work here. Then they would be involved and the county would be involved in doing those inspections. And I, you had mentioned that the state would be involved because they're state funded, but, um, just the thought of something that size being facilitated by the county and a county inspection versus our current process.
So my only, I, I have a question. Having multiple inspectors, how often is it, and, and there's, there could be several inspections per, you know, if it's electrical, you've got rough in versus finish or rough in with corrections and they have to come back. If you don't get the same person, how do you ensure consistency? So how do you know that they're following the same?
Is your website, so you can request the same A-Circ inspector? I believe it said it did, is that correct?
I, I think there may be a spot to put a comment or a request. I'm not, honestly, from my perspective, I can't even get onto that portal. I have to go through Andy, our office manager, to do that. But to answer your question, um, I have weekly meetings with the guys. We don't come back behind an inspector and try to reinvent the wheel, so to speak. And my favorite phrase is, we're not a crew of Barney Fives coming out here to drop the hammer. We literally, uh, our, the way we handle it is a hundred percent customer-centered. We're trying to create a relationship with that customer. It's easier to gain compliance when you do it that way versus, I'm a code enforcement guy. So, uh, consistency, we have non-stop training and.
I would assume you're documenting everything that happens, like if there is a concern that has to be corrected, then even if it's a different guy, he's going to have that note in front of him, right? If he comes back the next time.
Oh, yeah. If, say there was, uh, one inspector does a full rough-in inspection, so that means they look at the framing, the plumbing, the mechanical, the electrical. If it was somebody else the next time, they would be pulling it up on their tablet and they would be inspecting for that. Now, if they were doing their inspection, there was a trust that got cut after the fact or something, obviously that's something they would call out, but. I, I don't think I've ever had a complaint. I don't think I've ever had a complaint on them not being consistent. And that's something we really work at. It's hard to do.
Yeah, I've heard concerns. That was from years and years and years ago, but.
And I know exactly the.
So, I just want to make sure that that's been, or if there's some kind of appeals process or if that's where maybe the city could get involved to advocate for our residents and just make sure that this process runs smoothly. I don't want to feel like, I don't want them to feel like we've just dumped them on. We don't want to deal with it here. Go talk to them.
But this way, you're paying for it anyways. If you build a house in Albernette, the contractors aren't saying, well, you know, we don't have to have all these inspections on, I mean, you're paying for that service through the, in your contract, and I know that doesn't make any sense, but when they bid it, they're charging you for a permit and if they're cutting corners, nobody's going to know. I mean, that's the difference. We're going to save your citizens money by not having problems down the road, hopefully. We go through every single trust that goes in a house, as an example, every single one, page by page, web by web, make sure all the bracing is installed. So, we're very thorough and most people love it. Good contractors, hey Luke, how's it going today? Good, you know? So, I'm not the best salesman.
That's all right. I assume that was an issue of the past before, like you said, everyone syncs on their tablets and data is shared more easily now.
Rest his soul.
But also I know, you know, we have a certain way of doing things and.
The county actually, years and years ago, they handled the business a little bit differently. So, it has definitely grown, definitely changed to be more customer centered.
What did you say about the rating and how it could affect the homeowners' property?
There's what's called the B-C-E-G-S, Building Code Effectiveness Grading Scale. The ISO, yeah, I can't ever remember. Long story short, it's an insurance overwatch thing that grades us every five years. Lynn County has the highest score around. Center point, because they contracted with us, dropped their, they were able to share in our score, which potentially could lower insurance rates for your citizens.
And then I had also asked about, in our nuisance code, it states that a billing official, if there would be a need, could enter a property to do an inspection. They would be able to do those services for us. At this time.
Well, yes, as long as it's. As long as it's related to, yeah, building code, building safety. If it was lawn weeds or dilapidated structure that fell short of a dangerous situation, then that wouldn't be.
Or if it was a health code, then it would be the health. But if it was a building code, sorry.
Honestly, we, something like that, the reason why I said that it wouldn't, for our guys just to inspect it to see if it was unsafe, that's, there wouldn't be too many to where that would be an issue for us because we're already driving through. So, usually I just say, hey, go take a look at this address, report back to me, and then I'll get back in contact with the city and say, wow, my inspector said he didn't think so because of this or that. So.
Any other questions? We want to take any action tonight? Do we want to think about this? So, I did notice in the packet that Danielle sent, Bertram recently went through adopting, they had sent a letter to residents to a public hearing and the whole deal. There was also a sample 28E. I assume our lawyer would need to review that.
They provided all this for us. And they said that when they had the open house at Bertram for their residence, they had a really good turnout?
Oh, yeah. Full room. And I get a little nervous speaking, so when I walk in and there's, you know, it was Bertram. It's a small city. I'm thinking there's going to be two people in there.
And the other thing too is any ongoing building permits, Robbins would have to finish out. They're not going to jump in the middle of an ongoing building permit. So.
I think we ought to let everybody know. Make sure people know what we're taking about doing this.
Is that the right next step or do we need to get further down the legal road, have a lawyer review the 28E and?
I think we could have the attorney do that before you actually vote to.
Well, he's going to say in the public hearing, advertising a public hearing.
Did you say that the board supervisors would have to address accepting us or contract with us as well?
I would have to go to the board and ask them to approve the 28E as well. And we record it with the secretary of state.
This is similar to 28E, do you wish we could use with other cities?
Our 28E is standard. We will not change it. So.
We should do that. I think we should include the citizens.
We actually, our office manager had made a flyer for Bertram, like a mailer type of thing, which seemed, everybody seemed to like. We could do something like that. And we'll also make ourselves available. Andy's way better than me at talking about the fees and she oversees the permit texts and clerical staff. I just have my head buried in code books all day.
I think that's a good idea to get the flyer.
So, this is a flyer announcing the meeting to explain all this then? Or is the flyer just announcing that they're going to change?
It was a flyer for the public hearing. I mean, you'd want to.
The big question is, do you need to take any formal action tonight or do we just proceed and put it on next month's agenda for a vote?
I think we would need a vote to set a public hearing.
At next month's meeting or do you think it would need to be outside of in a special meeting environment? I mean, would it be overwhelming to do along with an entire month's business?
Well, will we have someone from your office to explain how this all works to everybody here in town?
Yeah.
I think that would be separate.
If we do a more formal meeting, if you were doing a special meeting or something, I'd probably ask my director to attend to. Probably be the three of us, hopefully.
So, more of an open house then?
Right, right.
I think the better you can explain it, the happier people are going to be, they're going to be more willing to buy.
Well, we could do a little special invite to some of our contractors that live here in town too. That, you know, just to make sure they know what we've got going on.
Yeah, and honestly, in my experience so far, is there hasn't been, I mean, you hear a little bit of noise at first and then most people are pretty used to us and they know half of our inspectors and it sounds like a bigger deal than it actually will be, especially given that most of the work's done by contractors. So.
And I would imagine the contractors are already familiar with you.
We've had a number of contractors come in and, oh, I went to the county and they told me to come here or they'll call and say, where do we get permits at? Like, come here, not through the county.
I believe it would be important to have a public open house to explain everything so there was a.
We don't want somebody to call Danielle. Jesus, they are new building permits. They will call the county. We have a situation.
So, if we're not going to do it as an actual public hearing, then I think we can set that off record, right? So, coordinate schedules.
I believe so. Yeah. Yeah, because I don't think anything in the law would say you have to have an actual public hearing to do this. So.
Until we change orders.
Yeah, if, yeah, if there's an order change, then they'll require typical public hearing. Maybe a simple motion to set a date for an open house might be appropriate. Maybe it doesn't even need to be.
If it's not going to be at our regular schedule, we'd all have to consult calendars and I'd like Charlie as well. So, I think we can probably take that outside of meeting, I would assume. I would ask Danielle if we could give the 28E the sample to the lawyer and at least get ahead of that.
Really appreciate you being here.
Yeah, thank you. Is there any more camera information from Andy or our office?
Is there something we're not asking?
I'm just trying to think, you know what? I can't think of anything.
They were so thorough. I mean, you ask us too. It just, because it didn't get brought up tonight, we might be able to answer it too because we sat here for an hour and we're through everything. We asked a million questions. So.
Yes, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you. No, you don't have to.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Onto, I don't know if we see overlay of North Street slash Burnett Station Road. There is a quote on the tail end of all the county information.
This spiraled out of control from first contact. It was going to be there, the county was going to overlay Burnett Station and wanted to know if we wanted to take it back on and we could do, basically, however, do it however we wanted. But now has evolved into the county jumping on the state bid process, which bring along certain requirements for the job, which turned the dollar amount into a number I don't feel that we should spend on that stretch of road. I guess the only question I have left for today and to explain in case anyone doesn't know, this would be to go from city limits on Burnett Station Road, which is just east of the culvert, about fifty feet or so, to where we left off with our asphalt overlay project from the, earlier this summer at the curb by the elevator. They want to go four inches all the way plus verification, plus a base layer, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, shouldering the entire deal, seventy-four thousand, three hundred forty-three dollars and seventy-eight cents. That is rural highway specifications, you know, high speed specifications. I don't feel that that is necessary for our situation. The only question I have of you is I could request from the engineer to narrow it down just simply because we don't have the actual footage from the railroad tracks to the city limits. It would be a fairly short stretch and the only reason I even ask that is for consistency of the paving. But again, at that point, traffic should be going twenty-five miles an hour. And I don't feel like we need to be at that layer, but since they turned it into a state bid, there is no options anymore on this. Originally, if I said we wanted to go back to three inches of overlay with no interlayer material like we did this spring on our portion, they would have done that. But now that it's stated, that's not. Thoughts, questions?
Well, you know, if we're still working on things like twenty thousand dollars for mobilization and a pilot car for quarter, less than a quarter of a mile, is it worth it?
I don't feel it is worth it at all. And even the stretch that I mentioned from the railroad tracks to the city limits, that I don't feel it's necessary in that scenario either. The only thing that I, the only reason I bring it up is just consistency of the paving surface. You know, is it worth spending a little more on that small stretch because the railroad tracks is a natural break? You know, the paving has to end on one side of the tracks and then can restart. We already know from our bid from Kleesner, I think it's nineteen thousand for us to go three inches from where we left off to the, to the tracks.
Is that a project we need to do?
I don't know. That's why we didn't do, yeah, I mean, our thought process was let's do the worst of it, which we did, and then wait at least a year, if not two, because we had already heard this might be happening. So, we decided, let's just wait and see what they come up with. At first, it sounded like it might be okay. Now, it's sounding poor, in my opinion, too expensive and overkill for our needs.
I would like to see the price.
Just from the railroad tracks to the, I will request that of them tomorrow.
I'm not saying do it. Let's see what it's going to take. I would agree. I can get, we ran into that, I don't know, Roseville.
Talking from the tracks to the tracks to the city limits. Yeah, but there's no natural break at the culvert. It's all, it's not a bridge. It's just.
You're just talking from the railroad east up to the.
Out to the. Just, it'd be, it would be past the box culvert.
Okay, wherever that is.
Wherever that, there's a sign there that says Lynn County. And I'm going to say, just off the top of my head, it's.
Twelve hundred feet.
No, not even that far. No. Two hundred and fifty feet, three hundred feet? I mean, it's really not that far. You're talking about four hundred feet would be absolute tops, I think. I could wheel it off tomorrow in five minutes and, no, I didn't even think of doing it today. But, you know, and I could probably go wheel it off and break these numbers down on a unit basis and come up with the number. And, no.
I'll put it up though. Don't waste your time on purpose.
Okay. Yeah, I'll do that.
So, they're going to pave Burnett Station?
Yeah, they're going all the way to thirteen. They were.
I think I need to go board supervisors meeting.
They emailed me and said they were doing it this coming summer. And then they emailed me back and said, hold off. I think we're going to push it off a year. And I still thought, why? That road's not in bad shape. There's much worse roads in Lynn County than that one. And then they emailed back and said, we're going to go for it. So, I said, okay, send me numbers. And that's when it all started to evolve. And the emails came one a week with the changing, changing till now it's this.
We could probably get a contractor to do state bid work, state spec work, cheaper, way cheaper than that.
Well, and this is an engineer's estimate. I mean, this will go to bid. There is a chance, just like any of the projects we've done, that that number might shrink. Also could inflate from there, depending on how much asphalt work is left.
It's not gonna shrink by fifty percent.
No.
No, right. That's, that's right. Yeah, they're going, it is going to be asphalt. And the new latest thing is to put this interlayer in between the old surface and the new. It's a thin layer of aggregate, I'm told, which I had never heard of before, but I'm not exactly sure what the, I don't know, I'm not experienced, but it sounds like a train wreck to me, but evidently it's the new thing to do. So. They also used to brick the old concrete and then asphalt over it and they quit that too. So, I have no idea.
Did you guess on that?
I'm done.
We'll look for the new quote on the, no parking sign on North Street.
I had a press from the elevator, especially due to grain trucks coming in and out and other trucks too. All of the sudden, the resident that's at the corner of North and Main on the northeast corner started having people coming to home health for his wife in the evenings, starting late afternoon, and they were parking their cars on the street edge, which made it nearly impossible for a semi to turn to go towards the elevator and also made it nearly impossible for somebody trying to get on to Main to get up to the stop sign and leave enough room for even a car to turn and go beside them. And so, it's creating a lot of bottlenecks. And so, they requested a no parking sign for that area, at least the length of a semi truck, to be able to get up to that stop sign safely and be able to see and turn the corner.
So, this is on the north side of the road?
It'd be on the north side of the road, yeah. So.
Is parking allowed? Okay. I thought I drove through there and there was already a no parking.
There's one around the curb, I believe, but there is a one.
Then no parking this side. Yeah, it should cover it.
It should, but it's far enough away that people don't even think about it. And.
But rule wise, I mean, I guess my question is, they shouldn't be parking there.
Yeah, oh, yeah. There's a certain.
Whether the signage is clear or not.
Yeah, yeah, but I don't.
It's not as though we're changing a parking pattern. They already shouldn't be parking.
Right, right. And we did ask the resident to ask the home health company to not park there and it has gotten better. But there's always that chance, probably on the heaviest harvest day of this fall, that they'll have a new person come and they'll land their car there and then all of a sudden there's probably.
Clarify that. Is there a no parking sign on that side of the street now?
It's down around the corner a little bit, but yes, there is.
So, it'd be, yeah, be right as you're coming through the curve. One of those people that are parking there probably, if they're coming up Main Avenue, they're probably turning into the driveway, backing around and parking.
I just wanted to make sure we're not changing a rule for, you know, based on one request, right? But if that's already a parking pattern that's set, then I can understand the signage. Who is it working? I need to know.
Yes. Yeah, oh yes, definitely. No parking here at the corner would be what I would put up. And I think I have one, but if not, I can get one from IDI in short order, so.
So no parking this side also as effective?
I will re, well.
Cause that's what's around the corner, I think. It says no parking this side.
We could do that too. We could go no parking this side. That would solve it. And also, because we don't really want anyone parking on that curb. We don't even want, that street is not meant for street parking, period. And especially without curb, they have the option to get completely off the road. So. I, I think we need a council motion to add any signage like that. I'm fairly certain. Even though the pattern is there.
Yeah, I'm sure.
I tried to find, cause I think otherwise maybe we would ask what our ordinance stated as far as what the city had to do to put a new sign in place. And I agree with, I know we talked about it. Body or opening to that portal stop sign. And that was just a peace officer was allowed to, we amended that a little bit.
I think I was under the impression that we were changing the parking rule.
Or really, probably not. I should, you're right, I should be able to just.
Cause I drove that, I mean, there is one around the corner. I can understand why it's not effective. So we're really not changing your rule. I have no problem.
So I should be able to just put one up, okay.
Well, if you already got a sign here and duplicated, would we need a motion?
It wouldn't hurt if someone's willing to entertain one. I think that was my concern last meeting was that we were taking a complaint and making a change based on someone's.
No parking this sign would, would be the appropriate thing because it would continue what's already there. Yes.
Motion by Sean, second by Trump, further discussion?
A motion to sign.
Place where?
Please say no parking this side sign.
Of course.
On the north side of North Street.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion here. All right. Elected officials, longevity pay increase. So this actually came from Charlie. So part of the pay scale that we have adopted at the bottom, there is a grade for mayor and council. And I would agree with Charlie, so I'm going to help for all this, that with experience, council and mayor should receive additional compensation. So what this says is for each consecutive term, well, this says each term. We can define whether those are concurrent consecutive terms. They would receive that pay increase. So if you're coming in as a first time council member, you're at the standard twenty dollars per meeting. If you get reelected to your second term, it goes up to forty. Maybe we adjust these numbers, but I do feel like some scale should be built in. We've seen the benefit of having experience on the council. And then equally for mayor. Thoughts, comments, concerns?
My feeling.
Well said.
My feeling is I understand, I absolutely understand what you're saying about experience is nice. Money's always nice. I did not get into this for any monetary value at all. Twenty dollars is great. I'm fine with that. That's more than I expected. I don't know, I just, I don't know. I don't know if I wanna do this. I don't, I'm gonna say I don't. I don't wanna do this.
We don't have to do anything with it tonight. He just kinda wanted to bring it back up. I concede the value, so I do know when I was polling people to get on the ballot for this November. And, and that's the other concern. We have one official, we have one official candidate this November and three open seats. I, I was polling and trying to garner interest and the first question out of somebody's mouth is wants compensation. Which of course I laughed and said, you don't do it for the money. And, and, you know, the difference between twenty and forty is maybe not big enough. But would you feel appreciated if, you know, the second term, if I'm coming in?
Now, we also have an ordinance, I think, that states we can't raise this vote.
Correct, it will not go into effect. I think it comes in with next term. Yeah, so this is not anything that's gonna impact.
On a side note to this, I asked somebody to, like, kind of beg them to get on the ballot. And they said, no. And the reason was they did not want to have to question that. And that was really sad to me. Because of the witch hunt stuff. So anyway, that's this.
I know, I know money's not the only deterrent for people not running this way. But I do know, at my job, if I do a good job and longer I'm there, it increases over time. So it might be incentive for someone to stay if they're on the fence about whether or not to run again. Just about, we don't have to do anything with it tonight, but we'll have to resurface that.
At least do one for a while. Cause it doesn't affect me at all. You know, and that's okay too.
You could also just increase him now, or maybe.
Just in overall, go from twenty to thirty and just leave it there or something. Or twenty to forty, just leave it there.
Do that as well. Sounds like, let's table it.
Well, I think you don't, you don't take this job to the state grid as a current service.
So we say no, or do we want to table it?
We can table it. We can discuss it again after I think about it.
All right. Well, it's, it's out there. Let's table it for next meeting, give it some thought, noodle on it. Okay, part-time public works, employment.
Did you got no?
No.
He took full-time position with the City of Central City, which is, yeah, benefits and homework, so, yep. So we're getting along. It's, you know, been exciting off and on, but we're getting along. We need to find someone, obviously. Scott has said he would help push no if we don't have anyone hired by the time snow season shows up. So we've got that encounter, which makes me feel good, so that I don't have to be worried about that operation. In the meantime, I've spread the word by mouth a little bit. There's some people out there that I think who might be willing to apply. We need to tune up our application. I believe there's been some changes recently on the way the world. Questions that can or can't be asked as to do with felonies and et cetera, probably not affecting us, but we probably better tune up our application. And I intend to post as soon as we get that done, so that when someone comes in looking for an application. But I've spoken to at least a, a minimum of three people who are interested already, so.
And they're interested with the understanding that at this time of year, they could be guaranteed zero.
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah, yeah.
There's no guarantee of hours this.
That is how I lead the conversation. I cannot tell you that I am gonna give you any hours certain weeks. I can tell you that the council would prefer you not to work over thirty on any, even when we're busy. I, you know, and that's how I start the conversation, so that they know. You know, there could be a two-week stretch where I don't need them at all. It could be, could be two weeks, but I ask them to just do water sampling on a weekend, you know, which doesn't amount to a whole lot. And so that's how I lead every conversation, so that they know it's not, you know.
I mean, come spring, that's a different conversation. It's, most likely have things ready to do.
And the, and if the winter's heavy, they'll get a lot of hours in in certain parts of the, of the winter. But, you know, and also, you could also go a month without any possible outdoor project being able to be done in the winter too, if it doesn't snow and it's frozen up solid. Yeah, nope. I don't know that, we did a little rewrite on that job description last time, so I feel like it's up to snuff. I feel like we just need to polish our application a little bit and should be able to jump right back out there.
Are we assigning that a pay grade, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's assigned.
Yeah. Okay, I remember which.
Show us what.
What pay grade was?
Fifteen, ten.
Fifteen, ten, and a half.
Six?
Six, yes, step one.
Six, step one, yep. And I don't intend to advertise far and wide, because that's not the kind of person that's gonna come for that job. You don't know who posting's gonna happen to.
Well, it happened with him so far, see.
Exactly. So local, just some posting around in post office and businesses. And if that's not guarding enough candidates, maybe land newsletter at most, but.
Do you need any action from us?
I don't need some.
Any questions? Good? Trick or treating. Generally. On Halloween, right? Five, seven day of, which is a Thursday this year, correct?
On thirty-first. I make a motion, we set the Halloween trick or treating hours on the thirty-first of October. Five P M, two seven P M.
Motion by Metzen, second by Trump, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Old business. Ordinance chapter forty-six, animals. So this is, Charlie brought this up last meeting, but he didn't send it out. So I asked Danielle to include it in our packet, but not for tonight. We haven't taken the action tonight. But it was, correct, it was on an electronic packet?
It was.
It was on the electronic packet, so please read through it. I would like to address it next meeting. And I think we had an outstanding question for the veterinarian office. Is that correctly, Danielle?
Charlie said he'd reach out to them and one of their veterinarians just resigned. So I think it was not a good time to have this, especially with their trainer areas and things.
So we were going to see if they would handle what the Humane Society does today as far as electing.
For animals.
Correct. Entertain that, because the Humane Society is.
I have a question on that. Twenty eighty, with the Humane Society, they said it's a hundred and thirty dollars per animal. Now that per, per picked up, it'll keep you for a week. I don't, I wouldn't put it on.
I think that's just for calls, so they'll get somebody to bring in an animal.
Yeah, we'll take one down, it's a hundred and thirty bucks and they keep that for.
I don't know what they.
They have a, they have a structure there of how many days they need.
Additional costs if they have to come back out the animal.
Yeah.
And they've been calling us and we've been politely saying, no, thank you. Found, we got our dog spotter in town. Found one within fifteen minutes, found one within a couple hours. I mean, social media is pretty easy. Yeah, and if we would have taken all the calls, we would have had four in the last year. Money can't really be spent, so.
As long as the animal isn't causing an issue, it's pretty easy to handle it that way.
So please take some time, review that before next meeting and then is that something? We're probably not ready for a public hearing.
I don't, we don't have to have a public hearing on every ordinance change. It's just certain ones, and so we could have a public hearing, we don't have to. We don't care if it has what notice the paper.
So there is a potential we may do first reading of that next meeting, so be prepared if you have any questions or comments.
I remember, my, that was also in regards to the vicious kind of whole debris.
Yep. Ratings moving. Perfect. Nuisance properties.
Picture on the screen is the condition of two thirty-nine North Main when, at the September meeting, when the council voted to allow the resident till the end of September to clean up. That's what that picture is from. The, the resident did clean up quite a few, like the red car and there's a blazer up there. And then that large heap is actually a dump truck with iron piled on it, though it disappeared. This is after we took abatement action starting Tuesday. We got all the way to dirt everywhere. The only reason there's those jugs that were by that portable building is because they had liquids in them that I had no idea what they were, so I wasn't about to take them to the landfill. So that's.
Actually, you take them in the resource center at the landfill, they'll test them.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's free.
I just didn't know, so I didn't wanna throw them in the, in the roll-off container, so.
Yeah, they'll test them and then do what they need to.
Yep. So basically, we got it all picked up. There's three portable, uh, tarp structure buildings on the property that you saw in previous pictures that are, are, it's the same stuff that we picked up off the ground, because they're kind of partially torn open. So you can see, I don't know how we handle that going forward. We talked about possibly amending our ordinance on what a portable building consists of. But there's three of those structures.
Well, right now, our ordinance for nuisance says that it's, can't be considered a nuisance if it's inside a structure. And our definition of structure is very vague, so I think we can shore that up. But even so, if you wanna consider it a structure, it has to follow other codes as far as being safe, so if, you know, those deteriorate, then we can readdress it. But for right now, based on how everything's defined, I think it has to stand.
I'm calling this a win. I mean.
Is this a storage unit up here or is that a temporary structure?
That's a, that's one of those storage containers, yeah, with doors on it. He brought that in.
That's what I thought when I walked by.
Recently, yep. And there's a, right next to it on the other end of the building is the other, there is. What's that? Yeah, those, the three of them are canvas covered units. Oh, no, 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 they, in fact. Danielle's got the picture of an animal skull. It's, it's basically spilling out of the corner of one. I mean, the flap blows up in the wind, so you can see the soul of a deceased animal in there. But it is within the structure, so.
So would that possibly be considered some sort of health issue?
Yeah, and we need to do a little, Luke brought to our attention. I, and I called public health before, they won't come into city limits. But he mentioned that some cities have an agreement with Lynn County Public Health. And so we really don't have an, a health, public health system in place. And so we may need to reach out to them and see if we could have some sort, because there's other properties in town that maybe could use that as well. If, you know, there's, there's other nuisance properties that we still need to follow up on and there's new ones that we need to send letters. I mean, we obviously thought we canvassed thoroughly, but after we got most of the, the ones that we initially saw cleaned up, then as you drive around town, you see some other stuff and it's not nearly as bad and it's not nearly, nearly as serious of violations. But I'm gonna guess we could send out ten letters tomorrow.
We need to be consistent.
Yeah.
And we're trying, maybe that first round is.
Yeah, we don't, we didn't want to get in over our head and trying to, so.
I think we're addressing it correctly, but one thing we learned at that conference in Coralville was that you need regular, you know, have to be a scheduled thing, once a quarter, once a month, you go out and drive around. That way, we're addressing them before they become major issues.
And we've let people know, I mean, if you see something, uh, cause, you know, one resident that we've addressed issues with, well, what about this person? What about this person? Well, if residents see something, like, they should let us know, because we can't be everywhere all the time. Obviously, Alabama's small, but if somebody sees something, letting us know, that way we can do something about it.
The other thing too, that, that we just talked about today, gathering the bills from this abatement process. Obviously, the property owner has to pay for the cleanup. We want to include in there a reminder, ordinance reference reminder that don't bring it back. Because the letter will just come again and the cleanup will come again if you bring back the iams. I mean, we have to allow a certain amount of things. You know, every property owner has the right to let their lawnmower sit outside their building for a while if they so choose. But if it gets to the point where, you know, it starts to pile again and it's mostly garbage, then we're gonna start the process over again. And hopefully that reminder will keep this from reoccurring. Cause we know at this property, it's been cleaned up once already by the city and so now this is number two.
And on that note, I have the invoice prepared with all the expenses, the expenses for the scrapper that came that we contracted for guys work for the removal of the tires. Um, our ordinance states that, um, you will bill this to the property owner and then it has to be paid within thirty days or you can assess it to their taxes. Um, state code also says that if it's over five hundred dollars, we can allow them, um, installments, installment payments. So I guess, I mean, let you guys see this, but I would like to know how you would want to handle these expense and sending this to the property owner, how much time you want to allow. Would you want to allow twelve installments? Would you want to allow her or say?
For reference, there was nearly four hundred tires on that property.
Times nine dollars a tire worth they charge you.
We took them to C C Recycling and we paid three hundred dollars a ton to get rid of the tires without rims. That was six hundred and twelve dollars. And then, um, the tires that had rims, because they process metal, they took for free.
Wow, that's pretty cool.
Yeah. Yeah, the other option was Liberty Tire out of Des Moines, which we now have found out that basically Liberty Tire in Des Moines is the only place within a reasonable distance of here that will actually still take used tires. And their price at their facility in Des Moines is a hundred and ninety-five dollars a ton, but they get additional money if they have the rims still on them, because they don't handle metals, where C C Recycling charges three hundred dollars a ton for the tires, the plain tires. And all that is, they told me flat out today, is that they're charging the freight charge up front to get them to Liberty Tire. So they take them in at three hundred dollars a ton and then ship them. Well, it would've cost us at least that much to ship them to Des Moines or more. And then the fact that they took the tires with rims for, I would assume they've got a shear and they just cut those things in half and it easily separates the metal from the rubber. Way to go.
What you're looking at, they might get ten dollars for that rim?
Yeah. Oh, I don't even think that would. Oh, freight is, or seal is so ridiculously low, I don't. Yeah, the scrapper was thinking that there was only.
We've charged twenty-five cents a pound to take them to the landfill, but they'll take rims and everything.
Yeah. It's. Yeah, the, the amount, even though there was two and a half fifteen yard dumpster, two and a quarter fifteen yard dumpsters of metal that came off that property, that was basically just paid for the delivery back and forth of the roll ups. It didn't, there was no profit for anyone off of that iron, just, just delivering the roll ups.
Well, that's okay, because we're not in this.
No, no, and it's, it's all the homeowner's expense and we did our best to try and keep it as cost effective as possible.
And I have all those itemized invoices that you were, that you already have. Oh.
Yeah, you saw.
Oh, yeah, they were, yeah, they were. So, uh, I'd like to know how, what the budget of the council is as far as, um, the timeframe on that invoice to send to property, or how, how do you want to do the installment payment, because you don't allow that, or say it's all upfront, how long time you'd like to.
Yeah, how do we do that, what if he doesn't pay? Well, I'm saying, what if he doesn't pay after the first month, do we assess it right away? Do we give him an entire year and then assess it, because now we're playing banker of free hours.
Thought you could state your agreement. If he, if he wants a, if he wants an installment, you need to make him sign some sort of agreement. If he signs that agreement and he misses a payment, you have built into the agreement that the balance is gonna go to taxes, you know, that, you know, and it's just automatic that if he misses the payment, he assesses taxes, and that should be.
For the rest of it, not for the payment that he missed.
No. Yep.
Yeah, I like that idea.
Do the thirty days or contact the law, it's a commitment arrangement, it would allow up to twelve months.
I'd say six.
I'd say six.
We're gonna deal with this.
Okay.
This has been gone fifteen years.
Okay, so do upon, or do the thirty days or contact the law allow to safely go installments? If an installment is missed, we'll assess it, we may not be balanced.
One of our only other issues from previous round of letters is still ongoing and we really are kind of treading water on that one to have the building inspection piece of it to go with, that's next door to this property. Um, so we're not ignoring it. He was watching us do this cleanup, so I think he probably knows we need business, but a big piece of that puzzle will be possible unsafe building violations. So just to know, we're, we're not letting off the gas pedal on that one, it's just, we're trying to get our building inspection. Yeah, part of it shored up, so to speak, and that's another reason for Land County possibly, um, being less, being more proactive, um, in that arena for us, so. Oh, yeah, that's the one I'm talking about.
I need to get a letter prepared about the permit, that's, or the, that's a building violation, that's, right?
Your building permit that you got is expired, so you must come in and get a new one. If he comes in and gets a new building permit for that roof, we gotta make, because then that allows the inspector on property. So that's.
Just the same person?
Different.
No, different.
Different.
Yeah. So, and then, like I said, there's, we could probably send out ten more and, and we're probably about ready to do that. Um, you know, and they're minor infractions, but just that, that first warning letter saying, hey, this, here's our ordinance and here's your out of compliance and, you know, not the actual nuisance payment. That's all I know.
And thirty days from that letter, right, fifteen, what was the?
Thirty, I think, thirty, when we sent out that, and we can look back at the, I think it's thirty.
The ordinance they, since you get them on.
Reasonable period of time, which means we got to pick it.
But it's hard to.
When we go, where to go? That's if it goes for a payment, then, then they have like, have a meeting.
Yeah, that's why we send the certified nuisance letter out.
Anything else on nuisance? Thank you both for coming to come on that, I know it was, it's been a week, but we appreciate you taking care of it. Sidewalk assessments and contracts.
I've been digging and digging and I, um, we are looking at the properties that have remaining balances due for sidewalk assessments and trying to determine what to do with the outstanding balances. Um, one property owner did come in this week, I mean, the first payment. Um, I guess we need to decide on the past due amounts that have been paid, if we want to assess those to taxes. I sent a letter, um, stating that to contact City Hall or we could receive assessments taxes. And I think the last meeting, it said we want to review and then try to reach out again, um, so just wanted to see where that's.
And we, so one other thing we were requested was to actually review the contracts.
Which is.
Um, we don't necessarily have our hands on those.
We're in review of the contract. We're good contracts and we're, um, trying to gauge, because there was, there's two sidewalk projects. It says first sidewalk project, um, and it looks like that was around the end of twenty sixteen, beginning of twenty seventeen, so that sidewalk project took place.
It was.
Okay. Oh, great, okay, and then the north park project.
So I know part of our concern was if the time for their contract was cut up, we could have to write. But there have been no payments made on these. I personally feel like we should take the same approach we just took with nuisance, send them another invoice, give them the option of a new payment plan with definitive.
With the remaining timeframe? So it would increase their payment amount, because you would be shortening, let's say they have a five year agreement, so you say twenty-four months expires, so you've got thirty-six months left. You would take that, that same amount and do that in thirty-six payments, so their payments would be higher, is that what you mean?
Yes.
Okay.
Essentially, they've not held up there in the contract by, they've not made the payments, no one's, no one's been in compliance with the contract, so I say we.
Keep, keep the same timeline, but re-appropriate the, uh, payment.
Yes, so rather than try to figure out, can we assess the whole thing, can we just assess what's past due, let's just start with, hey, we weren't necessarily invoicing you, however, you weren't necessarily making payments, this is where we stand, you have this much time to pay this amount. Because they weren't making money, so.
Twenty's are monthly, so, okay. So one, the one person that came in and brought a payment this week, um, has previously stated that they're not able to afford the payment. Um, he brought in a payment as per the original agreed upon amount, which was back in two thousand sixteen. Um, and I said, well, I don't know what the council will decide, I will let them know you made this payment. And he said, well, the original agreement still stands. And he said, well, I don't know if the original agreement was still standing if you haven't made a payment now. So, um, at that point, I can let that property owner know that this is your outstanding balance, you've now got thirty-six months left of the agreement to make that, so your payment is now dismissed, otherwise we'll assess the taxes.
That would be my opinion, because, I mean, that contract became void when they didn't make the payments. And rather than us try to figure out, can we assess just what's past due or can we assess the whole thing, we'll go with a good faith. Make years we can have remaining, if you're remaining timeline, finish it up, or goes to taxes.
And if they, we could ask them maybe to sign a new agreement stating that and then.
I think that would help, and maybe that comes on, yeah, I think that would help, to just set the, reset the terms. And then we probably need a motion. Does the lawyer help us with those agreements, do we have a template we fill in?
I have what we used before and I don't think it was.
Where Sharon got that agreement, probably she just made it or. Can't remember. No, it's very simple.
You're gonna pay yours over five years, a month and twelve months.
As long as we have a template to offer, I just don't know if I got it free on something.
Essentially, though, they're in default, no matter whether there was an agreement made or not, they were invoiced for the total amount at one point and they haven't paid it all. So i- if you want to look at it from that standpoint, it's.
If I don't make my car payments, they come take my car. They don't care that I have a five year loan, if I miss one or two, yeah, it's like three payments, they're gonna take my car.
And, you know, if they can fall down, you could assess the entire amount of taxes, but good faith, if we continue that till the end of that agreement.
Yeah, it's still a little frustrating that that original letter didn't spur more people to reach out to us, like, I just don't, maybe they don't think that we're actually gonna keep that.
Yeah, they're playing with our money, citizens' money, we're taking action. I don't get any freebies, I'm like.
Yeah, it's not fair that people paid it.
It's not fair to anyone in town, you know.
Why are we playing bankers?
So we can charge interest.
Well, I don't want to get too far from the original, especially if we're already kind of, we have a bad guy to say, oh, you said you can't afford it, but payment goes on now.
Right, right.
But I say, let's be clear, that if they miss a payment, then the entire remaining balance goes to taxes immediately. And then that's, we're done with cat mauls now.
And then we'll finish this up in a year, but we'll be, we'll be a five, another three year contract.
Well, and weird, I'm probably gonna sometime this winter suggest to you another stretch of sidewalk in town and so we need to have a good system in place before we, we go that route again. You know, it's time that we took a year off and it's time to, to get some more sidewalk going in these areas that don't have it.
Do you need a motion on that, or?
You're really good.
I would seek a motion from the council that we agree, or we pursue new agreements for the sidewalk contracts to allow the remaining balance to be paid across the remaining term. And should a payment be missed, the outstanding balance goes directly to taxes. Can I get a motion? By Trump.
Second.
Second by Menson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Very great, very good job.
Fire station project.
What's going on there?
Let's do it.
Is it built yet? We'll breeze it up first. New Vienna is dedicating theirs like next week.
Wow. Well, they probably got excess funds they can just send to us.
Probably.
Uh, latest, as far as I know, is, uh, Charlie and Joe and I had a meeting with M G A about the increased fee costs that they charge. Um, very good discussion, I thought, a lot of valid points made on both sides. They, they were stuck to their guns for the most part, but they did make, uh, the offer of an adjustment recently, about a five thousand dollar drop in fees, which is kind of a drop in the button, bucket compared to the upcharge they put on. And it has yet to be responded to, that offer, so it's in flux at this point.
Yes, I'm still very confused why we're paying fees on theoretical, we don't have actual bits, you don't know what this is actually going to cost.
Well, that was discussed too, Joe might want to.
Well, I, I think it's gonna come back to when they came in with their original bid, we were talking about X number of square feet. And I believe they understood that to mean, this is a simple fire point, a simple fire station, it's gonna look like a box, it's not gonna have any additional amenities to it, you know, hardly anything. Then we start talking within the fire committee that we need these rooms, the kitchen, we'd like to move the heating or the poles that.
H E A C and the compressor rear.
And mezzanine and what the kit, with the casket system.
Yeah, the compressor part of the casket.
Things like that, and then we talked about, uh, uh, doors on the backside, do we build those in now, or do we build that so they can put in a later time? And we start talking about concrete or asphalt, those things weren't, in their opinion, uh, alluded to in the original question, the boat.
But the total square footage, yeah, you're absolutely right, but the total square footage never really had changed that much. I mean, it was finishes and, and things like that. That's, that's where we were kind of arguing that, yes, it's upgraded finishes, but how much architectural work does it take to upgrade the finish? You know, and, and add some simple square interior rooms, yes, I realize it takes rhyme, but to, to more than double the initial fee, that's where we were.
I'm still going with where our fee is based on the valuation of the project. Project has not been evaluated by anyone but them.
Yeah.
They, that, that would be like me coming in and saying, I'll bid the fire station for a million dollars and I'm gonna charge you this much. Like six months later, wait, it's gonna actually be two million, like, we don't have anything, no, no one's actually, I mean, I know they have the experience and I'm not discounting that, but why don't we have this discussion once bids are in?
Another thing we pointed out is we, uh, want to bid this with addition of, want to bid the whole project. Concrete, and we want to have four different, ultimately bids, two, two, it takes more time, but we've got four sets of construction plate, it's on a computer, that's a chip. If there's four sets of bids within the, the whole bid, we better have half the comparison down, that was one of those.
Yeah. But I, I get your. I get your. Oh, I'm sorry, but I get Bethany's point about, we don't even know where it's gonna come into bid, and I get that, and they. And they, they spent a lot of time saying that percentage of the value of the project was only one portion of how they determined their, their cost, you know, associated. And I said, well, you know, whatever, you're basing it almost solely on cost of the project because you matched, if you take your original quoted price and match it to our six hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget that we kind of agreed on at the first meeting, and then take it to one point two million, which is where it's at now, your fee is almost completely percentage of project based. And they would not admit that ever, would they? That that, that was the sole driving factor of their fee.
There, in their one letter, they said, we're at nine point four or five percent of the bid. Now we're down to six point something.
Let's just say, there was a lot of knowledgeable, intelligent people who could picket little pieces. But when you look at the entire project as a whole, there was no way to nut and bolt it down to, to a, um, ma, to a line item thing. I mean, they did send us out in that email and itemized item what all this stuff costs. But we don't have anything to compare that to. On the flip side, in my opinion, it would be extremely difficult to go back to the drawing board. First of all, we've already paid them money that they're not gonna return. Second of all, they've got a built in, uh, fee if we end the project that we would have to pay. And then we'd have to start from scratch. I don't think it's feasible. But.
I don't think this is enough to have to drop it, but it's kind of the principle of it.
That's just it. But there is nothing saying that we have to be MGA's biggest fan when this is over with, so.
Do we have to? What if we don't say no, we're not gonna pay this?
They'll, they'll quit designing. Cause it's not designed yet. That's, they are at, they showed us the, the timeline and the, the where the, where the fees come and when they generate the money. And we're at the schematic design right now, which is basically the, the overview, more or less, what we've got, what's behind you on that photo. And they actually now start truly designing everything. They, they actually now put all the pieces together in a, following the rules, am I right?
Take the windows, take the time to door, take the air conditioning, take all those things, you've spinned it out.
So can we alleviate some of this by not going to the four alternates? Can we kind of make a consensus to say, in general, we know about what we're gonna save if we do or don't do? Or, I know one of the options is to not finish the inside. I'm not okay, but I want it done, like, let's finish it. So can we have a discussion, I'm not saying right now, about, can we look at those alternates and mix some of those? Would that help save on this fee? If they're saying that's part of the consideration.
I mean, we probably could. One of the alternatives is.
That's not a direct question.
No, we, it's something we talked about in fire committee. I'm not sure that's gonna save a ton of money. Probably say so. I think they probably got that out blind.
That one's, that one is hard. That one, the parking lot is really hard because, you know, MG, or MSA, the engineers are not changing their fees whatsoever, even though the value of the project went up. He's building in all the rock in the parking lot to hold concrete or to hold asphalt or to stay gravel. You know, either way, so that doesn't, that is not affected. It's simply the cost of asphalt and concrete. The, the cost to build those alternates in, I think, are mostly coming from MSA. I don't think that's gonna change a whole lot because MGA just has to do some design work on the, the edges, so to speak, of the parking lot. Where, you know, how they're gonna do the, the beautiful part of it, you know what I'm saying? Uh, they, they would do the landscape architecture part of that and I don't know that we'd save much there. The one thing we could knock out an alternate is if we wanted to just decide right away whether it's gonna be radiant heat from the ceiling or radiant in-floor heat from the bottom. That's one of the alternates. But unless we let them bid it, we're not ever gonna really know the difference in prices between those two systems. Because to me, that's the only, the driving factor in making that decision is, I think the in-floor heat is by far the best, but is it gonna be enough higher? We don't wanna go there. In, in this situation, I feel like the in-floor is the best. We could knock out the radiant, but then if we come to find out it's, you know, fifty thousand dollars difference, are we gonna wanna ignore the possibility that we could save fifty and go with a, a good, useful heating system? Just maybe not quite as good as our ideal one? You know, that's, that's the hard part about dropping that one off. Well, we, we all did.
We, you know, during this fire station meeting, there were everybody in the room kinda agreed, these were the guys who go with. They seemed to have most knowledge and experience with markets.
And have current fire stations ongoing. They were building at the time. Some of the other ones that, uh, submitted proposals had, had not built a fire station in quite some time and. It's, it's gonna add to the project, but honestly, is that fifty thousand dollar increase in fees a big deal on a one point two million dollar deal? I, I don't know. Yeah. Yeah, when you wanna look at it that way, it sure could be. And the other thing.
It just feels like if we just go to bid, like, yeah.
I, I'm, I am too brash sometimes. You can ask Joe, I basically said, you know, I felt like we got owes from the back door. Ows from the back door on this deal. And that's the way I feel about it. And you're not, probably not gonna change my mind and they tried to explain it all the way, but. Like I said, we don't, we don't have to be their cheerleader when this thing is done either.
And when other cities come to us for advice, we don't have to be friendly about them.
On the flip side, we may get through the project and decide that they're not so bad after all. You never know.
It might be worth it.
They might donate fifty thousand to our project.
At gunpoint or.
Anything else on fire station projects?
Um, I took, I hope I'm not taking too much, but I took some more filter, uh, two, two times from the intersection tear out the railroad did up here on First Street and now from the new house and the addition. I hope I'm not overdoing it, but Ryan from MSA said that he thinks we barely have enough. So if you see more miles out there, that's why free dirt is free dirt. So I took it. Yeah. If we had to haul it off somewhere, we'll haul it off somewhere, but probably better than going looking for it in the heat of the moment. Yeah, and it gets delivered for free on top of being free.
All right, with that, motion to adjourn. Bye, Vincent, second by Trump. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.